Morning. Yeah, there's gonna be some 4H people here. I guess it's eight thirty, uh, call the meeting order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Um, start with the invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anybody that would wish to? I'd like to also say, uh, Commissioner Krogman is, uh, attending the meeting via phone. Uh, he is here. You there, Ryan?
Yep.
Alright, hear you. Being no, uh, citizen to schedule time, uh, move on to approval agenda, if any additions or questions. Hearing none approved is read. Uh, consent agenda items, approval minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, and approval of the human services report. Look for motion.
Move approval.
I had a motion in second. Uh, all those in favor, if you're gonna say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Just carried. Moving on to, uh, routine business. Approval of claims.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Uh, all those in favor, if they're gonna say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Hearing none, motion carried. Um, letter B, Department head reports. Mike, would you like to start?
There, make a little noise. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um. Uh, I was away last week for training with the National Association County Veteran Service Officers. Uh, it was real good training, uh, learned a lot of different things there. Did get to meet, uh, a lot of the under secretaries for the different departments under the Department of Veterans affairs. Now, the one thing I would like to address that has come to my office twice in the last, uh, uh, six months, and I guess this is for you guys and for you to tell everyone you know, uh, we've been getting scams coming in and some of the people have been falling for these scams. It's been one of these cases where, uh, one person said that they're in the military and they were left in, in Iraq and, and different things like this. Another one is supposed to have been a, a military person that was incarcerated in another country. And I cannot stress this enough, the military does not leave their people outside of the continental United States. They will bring them back no matter what. I cannot stress this enough, but what I would like everyone to know is that if someone gets a call like this and they have questions, please contact my office. If, if it truly is someone that's in the service that, that has found themselves incarcerated outside the US, their chain of command needs to know and that's who would be the ones that would help bring them back. Otherwise, it's going to be the US government that'll bring them back and no matter how many thousands of dollars that you send to someone who's incarcerated uh, in another country that's part of our military, you, you will not have the power to bring them back on your own. It takes the government to do that. And now that I got off that soapbox, we did have a hundred and three phone calls in in the last two weeks, uh, forty-four outgoing calls, I was gone obviously, and, um, and then we did have twenty-six, uh, veterans stopped in and thirty-one stopped in for, on the welfare side.
Any questions, Mike? None? Thank you. Bob?
Good morning. We had a zoning meeting on June sixth. I attended such as Commissioner Krogman today, all from the telephone, I was out of town. June eighth, we had a PPCC meeting at the East Fire Station, my deputy attended. We had county budget hearings on June the thirteenth. June fifteenth, we had a public hearing on the administrative section of the zoning ordinance. We do not have anything to forward to the county commission at this time. We will have another public hearing on the administrative section of the zoning ordinance coming up. And, uh, once we get that part worked out, then we'll bring it to you guys and let you have at it. A full-scale exercise was scheduled last Saturday in Mitchell. The lake was determined to have E. coli in it, so we could not put divers in the lake, so they postponed the exercise until we find, uh, a lake that doesn't have E. coli. Today, at eleven o'clock, we're gonna be doing some radio test coveraging up in White with the White Fire Department to, to the ongoing issue of radio communications. Tomorrow, there's a tabletop exercise with the Brookings Airport. Thursday, there's a novita ribbing cutting. I've also got my Region Six Coordinator coming in and he'll be attending the novita ribbing cutting with me. This Saturday, the Radio Club will be using our Command Trailer, or the EOC Trailer will be out at the Brookings Gun Club and they do their radio, uh, field day, what's known as a field day, where they bring citizens out. And the Radio Club does fall under my jurisdiction as part of the Citizen Corps Emergency Management thing. Next week, on the twenty-eighth, I'm going to Howard, South Dakota, where we've got a regional tabletop exercise there that we're gonna run. Arts in the Park, the EOC Trailer will be used by the Police Department out, out there. And July eighth to twelve, I will be on vacation. Any questions?
Questions? Chris?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very fast and furious, I don't have a lot. Um, just our office, we're continuing to drive on with our rural review. We're getting some good progress on that, the weather's cooperating, so they're out and about. Um, one thing that did come up, um, since submitting a budget, just a heads up, I'll have to look into it a little bit more, but I've got our ProVal Plus Maintenance Support and, um, Agreement that we have to do every year. Um, I just got the bill for that and submitted the claim yesterday, but that looks like that's gone up five hundred dollars since last year. So I'll look at my line item and see when we get into the final budgeting if, if it looks like that may need to be increased. I think I'm okay, but, um, and then lastly, um, thanks to Terry, our OHE appeal that, that I received right after conference, that they scheduled for June twenty-seventh and then that was kind of rushing me a little bit, and then we got the change going to June twentieth. That really rushed me, uh, she made a call and had a conference call with the OHE judge. Um, we got that moved to July twel- or July thirteenth in Pierre at ten AM. So, um, July twelfth, Terry and Jacob and I are gonna go out the night before to Pierre, um, so we have some time to prep in the morning, unless they decide to pull. But my narrative is already put together, I was rushed and, but I, it's, it's done and now just proofing and proofing and proofing and proofing and, and I actually sent that off to another director um, that has an appeal with them. He's taken a different approach on his angle, um, with his appeal, but we're arguing to the same people, so we're gonna review each other's documents and see if it points me in someplace that I haven't, haven't thought ever, haven't looked at, so that's all I really have right now.
Okay. Vicki?
Good morning.
Morning.
Should have received the Finance Officer's Report in your packet and we have, um, four be it noted items, the auditors account with the treasure, payroll and additives total, highway expenditure report, and the register of deed statement and fees collected. And also in the Finance Officer's Report is a general fund surplus analysis and we are at fifty-three point seven percent, a little bit higher than some years and part of that is the second quarter transfers weren't taken out of this, um, for May and that takes it down to about forty-seven percent, so, um, but this is what the book showed at the end of May, so I wanted to give you that report. And, um, we're finishing working up on budget. Stacy and I are attending a budget workshop in Pierre next, on the twenty-eighth, I think it's next Wednesday. We're gonna just go out for the day. Rod is doing that. And, um, this afternoon at one-thirty, I'm meeting with Brenda, will be in the office, and also two from Legislative Audit, just to go over some maybe improvements we can make, um, maybe adopt a grant policy, kinda going through just some routine things that maybe we can improve on. So I'm gonna meet with them today at one-thirty. And any questions that anybody has?
Commissioner Pierce?
Mr. Chair, when you and Stacy go out to, for the budget training next week, are you planning on asking Rod anything about that, um, retirement item that we're putting in our budget?
We can sure do that, yep.
I'd like to know what his thoughts are on that.
Sure.
That would be great. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Marty?
Morning. Good morning. Last night, uh, the last evening, uh, they had another accident, injury accident at that intersection, at Twenty-second and Thirty-second. And, uh, as we speak, I think they're putting the signs up in today, so, um, there was a, it was a northbound car that actually blew the stop sign at about fifty miles an hour, uh, so didn't even, so, uh, you know, who knows if the four-way would have prevented that or not, but if they were stopping on the other side, I would hope they would look and see if, if traffic is stopping. Just because you got a stop sign doesn't mean that this, they're gonna stop either, so, so hopefully, hopefully that, that, the four-way will, will help out.
Well, that may help us get permanent because she said, I think she said there had to be six accidents there within a twelve-month period of time, while we've already had two in two months.
Yeah, so, so, and, and I'm gonna, uh, once the signs go up, I'll have my office monitor that too because, um, uh, it's gonna be new, something new. We are gonna put the temporary red lights on, on the new signs and, uh, so we'll hope for the east-westbound traffic, so. Uh, they've been busy, uh, the department's been busy. We made it through two celebrations, uh, the Volga and Elkton with, um, uh, minimum, uh, problems. Um, I just wanted to bring your attention is that, uh, our drug dog is, uh, getting aged. You know, their life, their, their drug life expectancy is about eight years and we're working on, going on nine or ten. I don't exactly know how old our drug dog is. It, um, you know, actually Brookings County has not had a lot of money put into their, to the, to this, uh, program. You know, the, uh, the Attorney General's Office on the first dog that, when I'd be elected sheriff, um, applied for the drug fund and, uh, they bought the dog, which was, it came out of a pound in Minnesota. Was a five-hundred-dollar dog and, and that dog was a good dog. It confiscated, I don't know how many thousands of dollars and worth of drugs. And then Jackson, w- w- in, our, that dog lasted over ten years. And, and the present dog we have now was a gift from Jackson County, um, uh, South Dakota, which their, uh, their drug deputy left to go to, go to Rapid City and he turned the dog into the state and, and the DCI gave us that dog. And then, uh, the equipment, I was able to upgrade the, the vehicle that that dog is in and, um, you know, so it's really, and I do have some community people that have donated money and so actually they're paying for the food and, and so forth for the dog, so it's been minimal cost. I guess the bottom line is, is that our dog is aging and I gotta, I gotta start looking probably for a new dog. Now, I, the Attorney General's Office just awarded us seventy-five-hundred dollars towards that, so, just, uh, so, uh, I think, uh, we'll probably move on to, to finding a, a new dog if, if everybody's in agreement, I can keep my program going. I think that it needs to, to continue.
What is the cost of a new dog?
That depends what I'm gonna do, if I wanted a high-dollar dog. Uh, there, the, some of them are coming from, uh, uh, you know, different countries and depends on if you, if I want an eight-thousand-dollar dog or a ten-thousand-dollar dog, or if I want a five-hundred-dollar dog. I, I've gotten, I've had good results with five-hundred-dollar dogs, so.
Besides that, our deputies would have to be bilingual.
What's that?
Our deputies would have to be bilingual.
Yeah. Actually, actually what I would like to do on the, on our, our future dog is have a dual, uh, dual dog. In other words, a search dog plus, um, a drug dog. That's what, uh, Lake County did and they got a, I already can't even tell you what dog they got, uh, right off the bat here. But they got a dual dog for search and we've had that dog come over and help us search. Um, you know, just with those recent things that happened, you know,
Right.
this last year, I think it'd be beneficial to have a dual dog. In other words, uh, this dog could go out and search for a missing person or whatever and then plus it's always, it's a drug dog too, so that would be my, my choice to have a dual, dual dog, so. But so far, if, if, uh, you know, depending on what, the type of dog and, and so forth, yeah, we're gonna do fundraising things, so it's not, I'm not looking to, to add anything to my budget. So it's been, it's, the dogs have really cost us pretty minimal. Insurance, it's insured, uh, you know, so. Uh, also, uh, the university, the university, and I think I sent out to everyone, um, I believe, Terry, did I get it to you? That the university, uh, sent me a mutual aid agreement along with legislation that they are gonna, it appears that they're gonna propose for this legislative session. And I kinda questioned a little bit and, and I'm not gonna speak for the police chief, but we both question, uh, the mutual aid agreements. It's a twelve-page mutual aid and I disagree with a lot of the things that are in the mutual aid. Also, um, I question, uh, basically, years ago, the Capitol and Pierre had their own police. It was called Capitol Police and they had no powers off the grounds of the Capitol. And the way I read this legislation, that they had no, they would have no powers off the grounds of SDSU, where now they do have municipal powers granted under, under the, the, the city charter. Uh, the way I read, read the, the legislation is that, is that they no longer would have police powers off, off SDSU. And I think that's why they're wanting to get mutual aid agreements between the police chief and myself, so they have power off, off SDSU property, which they have a lot of SDSU property in the county of Brookings. So anyway, I haven't had a chance to visit with Terry, that's just something that we review. I disagree with a lot of the things they have in the mutual aid agreement. It's restricting some of my powers up on campus and I disagree with that. As long as SDSU is in the county of Brookings, I have powers up on SDSU property. So anyway, that, that's a whole different story, but anyway, that's something that'll be down, down the pike. Uh, unless you have any other questions, I'll just wait, we got a couple presentation, or presentations and so forth, we'll do it. Unless you have any questions about any?
No.
But I just wanted to give you a heads up on this, is I, I question institutional police officers. They, they don't fall under the city, they're no, no longer municipal police officers. So I just kinda question, I know that some of that mutual aid has to do with the CLEARI Act. I understand that and then I think their police department is start, is trying to get accredited and I imagine when they, when, when you go for accreditation, you have to have a lot of things in place, policies and mutual aid. But it's by state law, they al- already fall under a mutual aid agreement for call-out for emergencies. You know, if I have an emergency, um, north of town and, and, or so forth, you know, I can call the university police now to come and assist me under the, under that state law.
Do the campus police, do they have the same certifications as you guys?
Yeah, they go through the same training, they, they, they go through everything, uh, that, uh, any other police officer in the state of South Dakota. The training's not an issue, uh, they have to go through all those, uh, uh, steps also. Uh, but, uh, again, right now they fall under the municipal city police for their police powers and, uh...
Mr. Chair, if, if I might say, I did read the agreement, not in depth, but I did read the agreement and, and I have concerns about the agreement myself and, and authorizing SDSU police to make arrests anywhere in the county is a problem for me and I think that's something that that agreement does. And the, um, reporting on sexual assault is one-sided. The county and the city agree to report any sexual assaults that are related to students, but SDSU does not agree to release information to the county and the city about sexual assaults on campus. And I, I mean, there are some things in the agreement that, that are, um, maybe not in the best interest of the county at large and those may be, if, if there's gonna be such an agreement, that sort of thing will need to be worked out.
Okay. Any other question?
Are you?
Thanks.
Oh, Dick?
Um, as Marty mentioned, we'll be putting up the stop signs down there on Thirty-second, uh, Street South. Uh, they're doing it now. Um, other parts, the crew have been hauling P-Rock, uh, staging it for chip sealing, which will be coming up shortly. Um, Bose has started the overlay work on Highway Five over by Volga. Uh, got the north part done and, uh, be starting the leveling course, uh, south today. Uh, the state DOT is, uh, out there boring, if you've been south of town on Highway Seventy-seven by the bridges. Um, as you remember, we signed an agreement to have them bore the north bridge also. Uh, and that will speed up, uh, the process of getting that north bridge shovel-ready. Um, also, uh, we're replacing culverts in the roads that will be, uh, chip sealing and that. The way the weather's been, has been a little bit slow-going. Uh, crack filling's been completed and the bridge north of Bruce is getting closer. They poured the north side approach pad, uh, be hopefully getting the south side done, uh, by the end of next week. Uh, placing some riprap, uh, that's part of it, that does, uh, it's really amazing the process it goes through to put a bridge in and the stages it goes through that you can't do one until the other is done and cured. So, um, hopefully they're still on track to be the end of June, uh, early July to have that ready to be paved. We also, um, milled over the box culvert on Twelve, that's the Sinai Road. Uh, it's the one that's derated or has weight restrictions west of the one that's in, uh, real problems. That, by milling that and taking the weight off of that box, we'll be able to remove the weight restrictions on that, so that'll give a little bit of relief, uh, down in that neighborhood. Um, also, we milled some bad spots on Highway Forty-two that have been a perennial problem for ages and ages and hopefully that, uh, gives us a little relief up in that neck of the woods too. Our new, uh, milling machine that goes on our skid loader is working exceptionally well. Both of these projects that we did in the last couple of weeks, uh, it, it just worked amazingly well and, and we were able to do it with our own staff, so. Other than that, I don't have anything, was Terry has something she would like to tell me? No? Okay, good.
May I? Questions? Thanks, Dick.
Thank you.
Misty?
Good morning.
Morning.
So I'll just start off, excuse me, I don't have very much. We did receive a five-thousand-seven-hundred-dollar grant from the State Weed and Pest Commission. That's why we have to go to our, two, two people have to go to two meetings a year, so we received this grant. It helps with our chemical. Um, also, uh, County Road Eleven, I was out there yesterday, took pictures. I apologize, I didn't have any pictures to bring up today, but it looks great. I think we got very, very great coverage, so. Um, that habitat takes up to two to three weeks in order to see any results and it looks great, so. Otherwise, any questions for me?
Are you?
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, we got, Vicki, you gave the finance report, yeah, okay.
Just have to read that through.
Be a noted item, um, Commission Chairperson Larry Jensen is authorized to sign the report of personal action for Deputy County Development Director Richard Hogan. Report of personal action. What that?
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? I, I just was unclear why, we do lots of personnel actions, why does that one get specially noted? I'm not opposed to that, I just wonder why we do it that way.
Isn't this requesting funds from, this is different than just our in, like, internal personnel actions. This is actually what we send to the South Dakota Department of Emergency Management to get some funding back, some reimbursement back for salaries in our emergency management department. So it's a little bit different than just our routine personnel action notices. That's why I note it separate.
Okay. Okay, we got, uh, a couple minutes. Guess we'll move on to regular business. Action to approve resolution number seventeen dash two-five, a contingency resolution. Whereas the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners did approve the line for contingency transfers in two thousand and seventeen annual budget and whereas the Brookings County Board of County Commissioner finds it necessary to transfer from said contingency line, now their four E. be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners within and for the county of Brookings, state of South Dakota, that the following amount items be transferred.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Call roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, we'll move on to our nine o'clock. A request to hold National Night Out event, uh, Deputy Mike Gingler, please come forward.
Good morning and thank you. Like I said, I'm Deputy Mike Gingler. Today with me is gonna be, uh, our officers, Michael Pop with the Brookings Police Department and then Officer Jeff Connor with SDSU Police Department. What we wanted to do is we got together and we wanna hold what they call a National Night Out, which is where the local agents, law enforcement agencies from the county of Brookings get together on a certain night and open up our doors to our vehicles, open up to the public where they can come in, be our equipment, just to get to know us, build a rapport with the people in our community, in our city that we protect and also gives them to ask questions and gives us to build rapport with our departments that we work with. The date that we're kind of tentative right now is gonna be that we work with. The date that we're kind of tentative right now is going to be August fifteenth, which will be a Tuesday. The reason why I'm asking for your guys' permission to host this event is because we would like to request to have it here on the, either the city-county parking lot or across the street in front of the courthouse on Sixth Avenue, between Third Street and Fourth Street, blocking off the road, which might bring people to be on the courthouse parking, or courthouse grounds, which is part of the county, along with this being part of the county as well. The time we're thinking about doing is somewhere, somewhere in the afternoon, for at least two hours. We're not sure if we want to start it at four or start it at six, but it would go for about two hours where the public comes to meet with us, go through our vehicles, ask questions, see the different agencies. Right now, we do have all the law enforcement of Brookings County, including the South Dakota Highway Patrol is on board, along with the South Dakota Game Fish in the Parks is willing to come up on that date to kind of showcase what they provide for the Brookings County. This event is completely 100% free. Like I said, we're going to go around asking for donations. Like I said, we're working on food. It's going to be the first year. It will be an annual thing, so we're going to try to do it each year. And then each year, we're going to have, each agency is going to host it. So when Brookings PD is in charge of it, it might still be here, but it might be over at the Brookings PD, and SDSU might have it up on campus. But we're going to try to keep doing this, and each year, hopefully, it gets bigger. So that's what I'm here to request, to see if we can have it on the county property.
Mr. Chair, what, if they started at four o'clock on Tuesday, do you have any idea how that would affect the court system if we had it over there?
Tuesday afternoons are kind of busy with our circuit courts, so six o'clock would maybe work better. I mean, we're running past five most Tuesdays right now.
And that's what we were thinking, was probably six until eight, just because it's still light out enough that we're still going to have enough people. But we were just kind of just working on that time.
Six o'clock wouldn't be an issue.
And I, I would think that the courthouse area would be more appealing than this parking lot for such an event. Because you would have shade and, and stuff over there if it was hot, which it sure could be in August. I don't know what the rest of the commissioners think, but...
Chairman, I think it's a great idea. I think that six o'clock allows families to come. And I think it's very important to get the young people comfortable with law enforcement. And I think that's, the six o'clock to eight o'clock is probably a great time for that. People are off work and can take their kids down and do that. I don't know that we can't close the street for that, but I think the city can, so...
Yep, that's what I just, just the fact that they might be going on to the county property. I just wanted to get that approved as well.
I know that's an issue, but the street probably is. You know, get permission from the city for a street closure for that. But I think it's appropriate, and I commend you for putting it together.
And I think it's a, a great idea also. And I think it'll be up to you all, whether you use this parking lot or, or that street. It doesn't make any difference to me. But I would ask that if, if you're going to use the street by the courthouse, if you just double check with the clerk of courts and make sure there's not a civil jury trial going on that day, that they don't have the court...
We usually have that on Wednesdays, so...
Unless there's a week-long one, then, then it would be. But just to check with the clerk and make sure that there's not an issue with a civil jury trial. There shouldn't be a criminal one, but let the clerk know what's going on.
I think it's a pretty good idea, and it sounds like you got good consensus here. And I think it's vital for public, you know, awareness and what you guys do, so... Move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we can move forward with nine-ten. Letter B on agenda. Nine-ten, recognition of Deputy John Pike as South Dakota East River Dare Officer of the Year.
I just wanted, this is Sergeant John Pike. He's been with the sheriff's office for eighteen years? Twenty? Oh, it seems like. Anyway, he's, and I've been, he's been with me for the eighteen years, so... Anyway, when, when I was elected sheriff, I brought dare to the county, in which we have it in, in all the schools in the county, including Dua County with Toronto, because Toronto gets a lot of Brookings, gets the first and second graders, kindergarten, too, at, at Toronto. So John, John's been instrumental with a lot of programs with the dare. And of course, dare is, attacks the demand side of drugs, so it's a preventive program. Dare's been around since 1983. It was brought to Brookings City in 1988. And retired police chief Brian Gumsen, myself, were the two first dare officers with, in Brookings. And one thing good about dare is that nationwide, they have other drug prevention programs have come and gone, but dare still stays here. And a lot of the reason why dare, dare stays is because of the interaction with the police and in the schools. And, and then the schools wanting this program. Because at any time, these fifth grade teachers, because we focus on fifth grade, is that these teachers could come and say, hey, we don't got time for this. We need to do arithmetic, math, and algebra, and these things. But our Brookings school still wants dare in their, in, in the, in the schools. And I think anytime we can go in there and interact with the kids. And, and I, and I know that John still has connections with kids that have graduated a long time ago, so they know that they can go to John with, with issues and so forth. So, and he was nominated by Volga Christian School in Volga, which they just started participating two years ago, and sending kids from Volga Christian over to the elementary school. And so I think that's quite an honor to have a new school sending kids over, so they make sure they get into this program and so forth, and then be nominated. Also, Elkton School nominated John for School Resource Officer of the Year, but he didn't make that cut. And Dubrook had nominated him for that. So that, that says something for the officer when they're local schools. That means that they like John coming. I always try to attend most of the programs, the, the graduations and stuff, and you could see the interaction with the kids and, and so forth with the officer. I think so nowadays, we, we need to continue that. So I just want to, this is a plaque he got, and, and I just want to have him recognized before the permission, so... So that, unless you got something to say, I send all the talk to the guys all the time.
No, I enjoy teaching there. Dubrook, Elkton, Sioux Valley have been good to me over the years. I got a good relationship with them. And I enjoy it. Hope to continue doing it for a few more years yet, so I enjoy it.
I have a second deputy that's at school right now. He's going to be, he's going to take the Volga school. This is going to free John up a little, do more of the school resource because of, you know, I hate to say that our schools are getting more incidents at school, and I want John to spend a little more time in the high school, in the high schools. And this will free him up to do a little bit of that, so... John's kind of my catch-all guy. He's got to maintain a shift yet, too. So he's got to keep all the deputies moving. And then he gets called to the schools to handle a lot of the situations there, so he, he, you're getting your money worth out of him. Me, I question that times, but you're getting money out of him. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if, if I might say that the twenty-two years I served as judge, I had the pleasure of being a graduation, a dare graduation speaker on multiple occasions. And it is just amazing to watch the relationship between the officer, Officer Pike, and the kids. I mean, it's just really, we are so truly fortunate. And some places across the country where they're not doing dare anymore, they just lose out on those opportunities for young people to, to get involved with law enforcement. And what you do is a really amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your service.
Can you move non-regular business? Letter B. Action approved agreement number seventeen dash forty-one, a purchase agreement by and between First Bank and Trust, Brookings, South Dakota, and Brookings County, South Dakota, for the purchase of the Brookings Outdoor Learning Center for an amount not to exceed 975,000.
Move approval.
Second.
I get a motion is second. Discussion.
The proposed agreement is, is missing, if I recall right, is missing the provision that makes it contingent upon us getting everything done with the city. I don't, when I reviewed that, I don't remember that I saw that in there.
There, Terry is...
Yeah, I do, I do think we need a contingency that says that our purchase agreement is contingent upon us being able to successfully sell the resource center to the city, because we don't want to end up with both properties.
Would that be under terms where we would add that line, or...
Where we have that list, right. It would be right in there with...
Ryan, do you have input on this?
Well, I agree. We need to have that contingency added, added to that. I think we have that on our other purchase agreements that we'll be moving forward. We need to make them all contingent upon the successful close of, of all of it together. And so I do agree with that. And I guess where we put it, you know, I think you just add a, add a line, or not add a line, but a number on there towards the end that just talks about it.
I think it would be a new number, D.
D, she said. Under three Ds?
Oh, conditions precedent number three. There's A, B, and C. Oh.
That was another note I had, was that there was two threes.
So it would be D under conditions precedent.
Do we have the specific wording, Terry, at all?
I guess, as Leanne has stated, it would be that the, it's conditioned on this, the actual, I mean, I can make up the, the language, but I thought I would get this to their counsel and have that done, and we can amend it as such. I don't, I mean, I, I want to look at it a little closer than just amending it right now. I mean, we have to amend the numbering. But basically, it would be the proposed agreement is conditioned on the sale of the resource center with the city of Brookings. I mean, if you want to just use that writing, language, that's fine, too.
I'm looking at the easiest way to accomplish it yet today.
I mean, that's fine, then. But it's basically, it's got to say that the proposed agreement is conditioned, conditioned upon the sale of the resource center...
...to the city of Brookings.
To the city of Brookings, yep.
And, and I think you want to have us, the sale, purchasing that land, too, underneath it. That, that has to be in there, too, I think.
Absolutely.
And the purchase of the real estate upon which the OAC sits from the city of Brookings.
Yep.
The other item that's not in there that was in the letter, and I, Stacy emailed me that letter, and I didn't bring it with me this morning. I think we had in there a condition, and I don't know if you can pull that up, Stacy, the, the letter, to make sure all of our other conditions are in there. But it doesn't say anything in here about keeping the OAC open until the transfer takes place. And, and I, I would like to see that language in there as it was in our, our letter to the bank. And then the public will know that those memberships are being taken care of, and they'll still be able to use those while we're in this transition period.
That's another condition you'd like to add.
If everybody's in agreement in there, that was in our, the letter that we had sent to the bank.
Well, it was part of our purchase amount that that would continue up to the 975, so I think it's probably appropriate to just state that that's the reason for that.
And that number two might be language you could just use, Terry, when you redraft. Number four is not in there.
I'm not comfortable acting on this until we've seen a revised, a revised agreement with all of these things in.
And then what does number five say, if you wanted to, let's just look at what else? Okay. So we've got...
We'd like to add our letter, item four, the bank working with the Brookings Outdoor Learning Center to keep the business in operation during dependency of the sale transaction, added as an item E under conditions precedent.
That's correct.
Three. So at this point, we have the two proposed amendments with wording to be considered. I guess I could have made a, a, a motion to amend the contract to include those two provisions, item D and item E. D being the sale of the other property to the city, and E being the item four, keeping the business in operation during dependency of the sale transaction, would be the two amendments proposed with proper wording.
Was that an amendment?
That was a proposed amendment. Motion.
Second.
I get a motion is second, amend the original. Discussion.
I would, I, I don't, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Miller. I think we don't have to sign this today. I, I would like perhaps someone to go back and ask the bank if there's a reason those two conditions aren't in there. Maybe it was an oversight. Maybe there's something else. Maybe we need to tailor something a little bit differently to meet whatever their needs are. I'm, I'm supportive of the purchase agreement, but I'd like to get those two conditions. And maybe there's a reason the bank didn't put them in there, and we need to discuss that a little further.
I somewhat agree. We can pass these proposed amendments so that that can be drafted and presented to the bank and to us, so we look at the wording and make sure it's what we want. And we can table this till the next meeting, but I'd like the amendment to pass, just so we can get that action taken. If that's the only concerns we have at this point, I think we can address those with those amendments.
Call roll call on the amendment.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Amendment carries.
Chairman, now, now back to discussion on the main motion as amended. I think I would agree that possibly we need to obviously give the bank time to respond to the amendments we've made. It would be appropriate. Maybe Mr. Teslov would like to make some comments, or do you want us to? Thank you, Ken.
Privilege to speak?
Yes. Make sure the mic is on.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for addressing this item. I just thought I would touch base, if I could, on just a couple of points.
Kevin, will you please state your name, so that the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Teslov, president of First Bank and Trust. Addressing the couple of points in regards to the continuation of the OAC that was in our original discussion. And we do have an agreement with the OAC to continue to do that. And so apologize, that was an apparent oversight on all parties in regards to putting the purchase agreement on. But we do have an agreement with the OAC that is signed by the OAC to continue the operations. So if that helps in that process, that is taken care of. In regards to the, the city's portion, obviously, at that point, I can't comment for the city in that regard. I'm not sure. I know that was always part of the original discussion that that would happen. I don't recall, Commissioner Pierce, of whether that was actually a requirement in the letter or not.
It was. It was item number... Two?
Okay. And again, apologize. I know our... Okay, um, and again, apologize, I know our legal counsel worked with somebody, I think, from the county in regard to drafting this document, and so it was an apparent oversight on both, both, both parties. We have no objection to that, if that's the commission's findings this morning, that they would like those included, both those items included, uh, we would be supportive of that. If that would help expedite the, uh, process this morning, that would be appreciated. One of the items that is not in here is obviously, then that hasn't been discussed, is the end date for all those contingencies to be removed, and then at that point, what happens, um, you know, if this all transpires, I think we were hoping in August, September, at the latest October, but adding contingencies, obviously then, where we can't control those contingencies from the city's perspective, we can keep the OLC open because it's our facility at this point, but we don't have the ability to control that contingency, and then the ongoing overhead and operating cost of the OAC would be a potential concern for us, but, but we are fine with putting those, uh, conditions in the agreement.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Kevin, I, I appreciate that urgency to, to move forward, but maybe our next meeting is in two weeks? Three weeks? Okay, it's a little longer than I thought. Uh, we will be talking to the city to start that process, we have letters of intent, this was before I got here, but as I've read through those letter of intent, those are things that we need to go through to make sure that, that we can execute that purchase of the, or the sale of the property to the city, so I think, yeah, that's probably going to take a couple of meetings with us, uh, or with the city, I should say, to finalize those things. Yes, I would say that we're going to probably approve this as amended, maybe we just need to get the paperwork done rather than, you know, say, well, it's okay, it's okay, I think it protects the bank and it protects us and it protects the city, so we can go through that process, I still think we can get to that deadline, I don't think that's going to be an issue, but, uh, you know, certainly you want to see some support of the purchase agreement, even though it's not. If we can't finalize it today, as soon as possible, which will be our next meeting, and if absolutely necessary, I guess the chair can call a special meeting to do something, too, if we run into any, any obstacles we need to address, but, uh, I'd, I'd like to move forward as, as quickly as possible, I'd like, I think the public would like us to, to make these decisions, uh, quickly rather than later, so that, we, we're concerned about keeping the facility viable for all the patrons.
Mr. Chair, I hadn't seen Mr. Teslov sitting back there when I made my comment, I should have looked a little more carefully, um, but I'm going to rescind what I said before with the bank here in making that statement, I think we could go ahead and approve this subject to the amendments, that once Ms. Nesvold has revised the purchase agreement, it could be circulated and we could all let our assistant know whether or not we're in agreement with the wording and, um, authorize the chair to sign it at that time, so we don't have to wait three weeks. That would be another way we could proceed, so we could get things moving.
Mr. Chairman, I would concur that we could do that, exactly.
Well, Mr. Miller, any input, or?
I stand by my, we don't have our ducks all in a row here.
Oh. I know the final date, we kind of were set on the October 1st as the final closing date. Ryan, do you have any thoughts?
Well, um, I, you know, I was ready to vote on this, uh, when, you know, today, I wanted to, to get this going and start moving, um, but, you know, and I, we have three weeks, the next one, which is kind of disappointing to have to wait that long, uh, but I, I do think, uh, we need to make sure we have everything written, uh, correctly, uh, I think we need to have all of our, our ducks in a row and, uh, and want, and want to move forward with this, but I, I guess, uh, I think we should wait, have it all ready to go and, uh, and have all the lines, uh, ready to go with the city, uh, their agreements, and work towards those, and, uh, um, again, we don't have to have this done tomorrow, um, we don't have to, since First Bank and Trust has an agreement to keep it open and to continue it and, and keep the memberships valid, and keep the doors open, I think, um, we don't have to do this today, much as I would like to, uh, but I think, uh, we just need to have everything lined up in a row first.
I don't know what your thoughts on holding any special. Uh, the next meeting is the 11th, you said?
You have a date you're thinking?
I don't know how long it's going to take, uh, Terry, do you think to review this?
It's not going to take very long.
And then maybe to get a draft to the bank so they can see it before we approve it, then, if, if we're going to take the time to do it.
I am gone on the 27th, I don't need, no, I'm back on the 29th.
I was looking at Tuesday.
The 27th?
Yeah, I'll be out of town that day, but.
As will I. I'm here, but if we've got two commissioners missing, do we want to move forward?
I'd rather have the full commission here.
Exactly.
How about like the 29th on a Thursday, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Tuesday. Thursday works out for everybody, we could do that.
I'm leaving town the 29th, but. What time are you leaving? I'm not sure. Would the 29th work for Ryan?
Ryan, would the 29th work?
We're talking the morning, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah.
8:30 in the morning.
On the 29th? In the meantime, state's attorney will get the revision done and out to the commissioners and then to the bank, and if everybody's in agreement, we'll move forward then. Is that what we're talking about?
Motion table until?
Make a motion to table until the 20, special meeting on the 29th. That does require a second.
I have a motion to table to the 29th. Is there a second?
Second.
I got a second from Ryan. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman.
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, letter C, oh, wait a minute, we got, yeah, I think we can do this, action to approve a construction change order for the County Road 5 project in an amount of $9,500.
Over approval.
Uh, for the public's benefit, I, Dick, will you speak to this, please?
I have a second.
Second.
Got a second from Stephanie.
You want to?
Some background on this.
Oh, all right. This dealt with, uh, bridge restriction, weight restriction on County Road 12, uh, when they were submitting their bid, their anticipated return route would use, um, Highway 12, uh, to get back to the plant. Loaded, they were never able to go that way, but they would have just made a, a loop after the bridge restrictions were, um, placed, that eliminated that, so they pretty much have to go back the way they came, and therefore, as you could see in the letter, they just figured it would add 15 minutes per round and that at $95 an hour, so if you divide it out, it's about 95, 94.997, um, cents per ton. So, um, it is something unforeseen, uh, that, that nobody would have anticipated happening, and it did, so, um, I guess they're asking, and, um, I, I don't have a problem with it, I think it was unforeseen and, and it probably will add quite a bit to the, the cost of the project.
I don't like change orders, as everybody knows, I've said it over and over and over again, but this, it, it was something unforeseen, and so that's why I wanted you to explain what happened here.
Is this, uh, I've never seen something like this before, I guess, but I understand their concerns. Thoughts to the other commissioners?
Guess I would take Dick's recommendation, it's, uh, probably appropriate, we won't see this probably ever again, but we may, I'd guess, but, uh, this is an unusual circumstance, and, uh, I guess I, I can support it.
I can curl with that.
No further discussion?
One, one further comment that you reminded me of is also, um, they were not taking into account the whole project, just the half that they were, created the hardship for, so I, I thought that was acceptable also, or a good move.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a 9:30 scheduled. 9:30 discussion and possible action to approve request for funding from Midary Township.
Good morning.
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 Mark Richards, supervisor for Midary Township. I guess since our meeting two weeks ago, I did bring in a, a quote for the five loads of crushed concrete that we talked about at that time. Oh, you're going to have to help me, Stephanie, it's 1,600, 1,500, 1,600 bucks, correct? Raise it up, there you go, okay. On that, and, uh, again, that's kind of a start for us and things like that, so, uh, but, uh, I guess that's what it is at this point.
Any thoughts, or?
How many loads did you say that was?
Five.
This would be a, uh, belly down for a truck and a pup, so.
I guess one question I had, uh, was, has a county utilized this road as a haul road for any purposes, or?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge.
I know we've had, I didn't even see it in the paper last, two weeks ago, but, uh, had, had a few people calling in regards to if this is going to happen, uh, for, for projects that they have, uh, in particular up on that North Lake Drive that is, that is really an island, uh, this year, uh, as far as access, uh, any heavy loads.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mark, if I might, uh, we're talking, round figures, there are $1,500 worth of, uh, gravel, uh, crushed concrete, I guess is a better answer for it. I'm kind of new to this with townships and budgets, so, uh, forgive me if I ask this, but, uh, this would not ever be considered normal maintenance under the township's budget currently, I mean, what type of funds do you have available now?
Well, on this road, no, it wouldn't be, uh, it has been declared a minimum maintenance road by our township.
Right.
And, uh, it's because of its location and, and everything, so, uh, while we do try to maintain it and keep it passable, to be spending, well, we spent, uh, a little over five, between $5,000 and $7,000, I don't have the exact number with me already this year to get it up to this level, uh, and, you know, we wouldn't have spent that much, we would, we would have bladed it, we would have, minimum maintenance, is what we would have done on a mic.
But again, I don't understand the budgets of townships, how much money do you have in your annual budget?
Our annual budget, our annual budget is a little short of $100,000.
And what do you have in funds right now?
I don't have that information available right now, but, uh.
It's not a hardship, you have this kind of money, you could pay for this, but your budget expenses?
It is going to create a hardship for us, I mean, right now, the money that we were going to spend on this road is, is an issue, yes, by the end of the year.
An issue for the budget because you have other expenditures planned that we, I mean, I don't.
Our, our $100,000 budget is basically our operating expenses for the year, I, I mean, I mean, that's what we spend, and, you know, uh, well, just as an example, you know, well, it's not, you're, you're talking $9,000 for a change order, we spent $9,000 on calcium chloride this week, which is something we never do, uh, you know, if, if we don't do this, we're simply not going to gravel our roads as we have scheduled out, we schedule out six or seven miles of gravel in each year, we'll probably, uh, forego a mile, uh, or two perhaps, to take care of this one road, uh, that is, that again, is a minimum maintenance road, uh, and it, uh, it, it's just not, not on our list of things, things to spend a lot of money on.
So you have approximately $100,000?
Annually, you're correct.
Okay, what do you, what do you have in your account?
I'm not the treasurer, I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
We, we have that information, don't we, somewhere?
Mm-hmm.
Of what the townships have in their account balances.
Currently $175,000, that was reported in March, I believe, Vicki, or?
Could be.
Yeah, it was filed for the end of February, or first of March.
So you have some carryover from previous years to get to $175,000?
Only because there was no storm move the last winter.
I guess my thoughts on this, if we would approve, if we would approve this, and if the county would need to utilize this route, I'd hope that we'd be kind of held not as responsible for maintaining if we were having to have to use that road occasionally.
I, I guess we're seeing the improvements this year would, I mean, are for everybody, simply for the fact of the situation with signing I wrote, uh, county is no different than a, a landowner or anybody else with that, uh, you know, I, I wondered how you guys get a snowplow to the west side of those bridges, I mean, you know, you, you weigh too much to do that and, and anything else, so, no, I, I guess that's my thought with the area is, is this isn't just for our township use, it's for everybody, and, uh, you know, as I, as I use that road quite a bit in the neighborhood, you know, I, I've got to believe that one of these days, one of those semis is going to create an issue because they're still going across the bridges. And, uh, and things, so, it, it, it's, it's, it's an access road, and it's, it's a detour, is about what it amounts to, I guess.
And I mean, as, as commission, we've actually went through our budget process and we've identified the river bridge as one of our projects that we're going to move forward and do, or, I mean, the highway department addressed the other issue on that smaller bridge as best we can, and we're looking at that area, we know there's concerns, but like I said, if we approved this, I'd hope that if we needed to use that road, we, you know?
We would certainly think you would.
I would move approval to, um, pay $1,493.15.
Seventy-five.
And 75 cents, uh, for crushed concrete on, um, could you tell me the name of the road again? 217.
217.
Midary Township Road 217, where the traffic has increased due to the weight limits on, um, the bridge on Highway 12.
Second.
I get a motion and a second from Ryan.
Mr. Chairman?
And yours, Mike?
Quick question. Would we be using that road as a detour when we do the bridge? There's another detour route that we would use, but people would shortcut and use that anyway? I mean, that's what you're saying now, is people are using it as a, a detour because of the load limit. If we close the bridges and, and have a construction season, uh, they're gonna probably continue to do that as a detour, is what you're trying to tell me?
I would, human nature's gonna take it short of what-
May not be the designated detour, but they're gonna probably use it next year.
Absolutely.
Like, with that, I can approve it just because I think that's what will happen, I guess.
That's, I agree with Mike. I mean, that's about the only road there, so. Let me call roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't wanna do anymore on this minimum maintenance road.
They, trust me, uh, that makes two of us, Stephanie. I, uh, isn't one of our favorite issues either, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to letter D. Action to approve agreement number seventeen dash forty-two, a letter of contract for professional engineering services, phase-one services, including hydraulic design services, structure number oh-six-one-four-seven dash two-zero-zero, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
The motion and the second, uh, discussion. Okay, 'cause this is, this is a bridge on twelve, correct?
Yes, this is the one you're just referring to.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller? Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E. Action to approve agreement number seventeen dash forty-three, an agreement between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Transportation to provide for the striping and continuing maintenance of county roads within Brookings County.
Move approval.
Second.
I get a motion and a second. Discussion. Any none, call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller? Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F. Action to approve agreement number seventeen dash four-four, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Second.
I get a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller? Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G. Action to approve agreement number seventeen dash four-five, and a state, a state of South Dakota subrecipient contract for subrecipient services between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Health, Division of Family and Community Health.
Move approval.
Second.
Need a motion and a second. Any discussion?
That is a very long contract. Holy buckets.
Okay. Call roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H. Action to approve Robert Hill as the Brookings County Designated County Delegate for the two thousand seventeen NACO National Convention.
Move approval?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Bob, any input?
No, sir, I'd be more unhappy if a commissioner's gone, I'd be more unhappy to back off it, but if, if not, I'd be more unhappy to represent the county.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number nine, Commission Department Director Report.
I did include an email from Tom Grimmon with Doordie and Company LLC regarding, I asked him the question after SDSU was in two weeks ago to discuss using the county as a conduit for, for bonding. He said, his, his response is, is here, but it, basically we get ten million dollars per calendar, calendar year of, um, bank-qualified bonds. So if the county believes that there may be something that you want to utilize your bonding authority for in twenty nineteen, eighteen, or twenty nineteen, or any subsequent year for that matter, you would not want to give up that bonding authority to another entity. However, if there isn't anything on your radar, you can do that, and they can get that bank-qualified and the tax-exempt status from us with no cost whatsoever to the county. They administer everything, and we have done this in the past with, um, United, United Retirement Center, as well as SDSU for a number of projects. So that was just a follow-up, um, from the questions that you had following the conversation with them last week. They did bring up the township balances, that was with their annual statements that are turned in. Um, their, their fiscal year runs March through February, so they had their annual meetings and have to turn this information into the finance office each year, typically by the end of March, and so those are the balances as of February of this year from all of the different townships. We did receive, um, some information about, I think, and Chris Lilla had shared this as well a couple of weeks ago, that Reed Squires, our appraiser down at Equalization, um, has become a certified appraiser-assessor, has completed his, his classes. I did the surplus, surplus cash analysis through May, just the hi, the historical data, and you can see that as part of the packet as well. Um, and then, let's see, just some upcoming dates. I did, um, that's going on today. The first bullet point is going on probably as we speak. The Novita Aurora Ribbon Cutting and Plant Tour, there, we, we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, and for those that said they could attend, I did RSV, RSVP for you for that event coming up this Thursday at one-thirty. There is a STIP review on the twenty-seventh at the First District Office in Watertown. Uh, we will be closed coming up Tuesday, July fourth.
Twenty-six.
We have, what's that?
Twenty-six, we got that intergovernmental meeting.
Yes, and that's just two of you, so. And then for, coming up for supplemental budget hearings, we have to give Vicki authority to advertise for those. So as we go through this process of, of, would you like to see that as an action item at the special meeting on the twenty-ninth for the OAC purchase? Or do you wanna, yes?
Yes.
And that would authorize us to advertise for that hearing, and then, and hold that hearing then down the road a ways?
Right.
After we reach all of our deadlines. Okay. And the other, we had another one, too, um, but that, oh, that was just transferring money, the monies that we already have set aside for, assigned for the jail expansion project to create that new capital outlay fund. So is there a specific time that you want to take that action to move those assigned dollars that we have both in general fund and the building fund, three-oh-one fund, to this capital outlay fund? Is there a certain timeframe that you're looking at for that? Does it matter?
Not right now.
You don't want to?
Let's just set on that for a bit.
Okay.
How, how much, how much is in the general fund that's affecting our surplus? Because I think our surplus is too high.
Vicki just said what the reason was for that.
Yeah, but, but it'd be forty-seven if we didn't have, still forty-seven is historically high for this time of year, and maybe, maybe we should...
Forty-seven is, yeah, uh, uh, on the high side for this even now, as we look at it.
And, and just to make it clear that we don't actually have all of that, I, I think since we know we need to put some money from general fund over to the building fund, maybe we should just do that and have it taken-
It's a million dollars right now, and we have one million assigned in the general fund for the jail expansion project.
And can you roughly tell us how that would impact our surplus number?
It, it wouldn't affect the surplus number because we have it assigned.
Oh, because it's already assigned?
Right.
So there's nothing in the general fund that we're looking at transferring for the detention center that's unassigned?
Correct. Not yet, anyway.
All right.
But I can bring this up later, too. I mean, it's, I don't think there's any real rush to do it, but we, you know, just in, in trying to get that fund established, just know that that's action we have to take, and before we can do it, it's not something that we can decide now to do tomorrow, 'cause it has to be, that hearing has to be noticed, so just keeping that in mind, it's a process, so. On, the only other thing, and Sean may want to come out for, to talk about this, but we've kind of been tossing around the idea, 'cause Sean, um, heard that there's maybe a possibility for an IT intern for a, an unpaid internship with a, a high school student coming in, just maybe even, um, I mean, I, I'm thinking maybe five to seven hours, five, eight, you know, maybe eight to ten, maybe tops, hours per week, uh, maybe starting this fall once school gets back in session. There's some students, you know, I think specifically at Brookings that are going through a class that may benefit from coming here and, and, and working with Sean, shadowing him. Um, but this is something that we feel like we could reach out to the other school districts as well and see if, if there is an opportunity there as well. So if that's something, again, it'd be an unpaid internship, just a high school student coming in and, you know, learning the ropes from Sean, so if that's, we can do some more looking into that, if that's something that the board would be interested in us pursuing.
If he has time to do it, fine with me.
And if we have the appropriate protocols in place regarding passwords and stuff, so we don't have an issue later, and I, I think it'd be nice to see those before we have an intern. I favor having interns, but that's kind of a sensitive area, and I wanna make sure that we would have the proper security in place regarding that.
I agree.
With, can you say that, oh, passwords, is that what the, okay?
Thing that came to mind immediately for me, but there maybe are some other things, too.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah.
How do we do that, so we're, we're protecting ourselves when it's our IT stuff?
Yes, yes, I'm, and I know Sean is very cognizant of those issues, so, so. Well, as we learn more, we can discuss that, too, as, and we'll let you know if that's something that will come to pass.
Sure.
Permission to speak?
State your name, please.
Jonathan Sundet. As a high schooler, freshman, I, I really would, would be, I really encourage you to look into that, because, um, recently I've been trying to get involved as, in the city local government, and it's very difficult to be involved as a high schooler in the city, uh, government. So, I, if you would look into that, that'd be very much appreciated for some high schoolers that are trying to get involved.
Appreciate it. I mean, I think we're all in favor, we just wanna make sure we got our bases covered, and we'll, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is all I have, unless you have any other questions of me.
Terry, Deputy State's Attorney, report.
I continue to work with Bob Richard and Leann on the ordinances. We worked on some planning and zoning findings of fact. Um, Abby, myself, and Brittany will be attending the bar convention, leaving at six in the morning tomorrow to attend that. Um, other than that, I really don't have anything to report.
Okay. Moving on, Commissioner Reports, discussion. Leann?
On June sixth, we had a planning and zoning meeting. Um, we did, um, not approve the conditional use permit north of Brookings, and the, um, the, uh, Board of Adjustments was split four-four on that issue. On June seventh, and one other date, Terry and Richard and I met, and I think Bob was there one of those times, I'm confused on who all was where, but we are continuing to, to look at the ordinances. Started looking at the natural resource ordinance, which eventually is gonna come in front of everybody, but it's gonna go through Planning Commission first, but just a point of interest in there. We had identified in our old ordinance that all meandered lakes in Brookings County are a natural resource area. Now, with all of the stuff going on this year, with what the definition of a meandered lake is, I think we're going, we're going to be looking at changing that, because once we got a tentative list from the state, was it thirteen or seventeen? Eighteen. We have eighteen meandered lakes in Brookings County, so, which is, is kind of interesting, but, but, um, planning and zoning will look at that again once some proposed language comes out. Then, um, attended budget hearings with all of you on the thirteenth and the fourteenth of June. We had a special planning and zoning meeting on June fifteenth, last Thursday, and, um, during that meeting, we'd had a public hearing on the administrative section, and Bob talked a little bit about that, and we did have some citizen input, and we ended up, um, we're going to have another public hearing on it. Some of the issues that were raised, and I'm trying to keep you up to date on this, because the commission, you'll get a recommendation from the Planning Commission on the new ordinance, but the commission is who approves the new ordinance. And one of the issues that came up, when we wrote the draft on the administrative section, we made all of the noticing periods line up with South Dakota statutes, which are all ten days. It just, we were in compliance with that. There was public input that, that ten days is not long enough, and that people would like Brookings County to have something longer than the ten-day period, and we're sending that back to a subcommittee to look at that and to bring it back. That's one of the reasons that we're going to have another public hearing. And then, um, one of the things that came up is an applicant, and we've had this happen, um, several times in the last year, an applicant files a conditional use permit that might be somewhat contested, and the applicant comes to the first hearing and asks to have the matter tabled because they need to do something. Planning Commission, or Board of Adjustments will say, you need to do this, or this, or this, and then we would consider that, then it gets tabled, and we have all these people here, but the, the people that are the opponents, they never get a chance for a continuance, so they can get their ducks in a row and get everything ready, and we're looking at maybe putting some language in our ordinance that would allow opponents a certain number of days before the public hearing to ask for a continuance for a good reason. There'd be one continuance, and we're trying, we're going to look at that, see if we can come up with any language that, that would maybe, um, facilitate that. But if you're doing notice and an opportunity to be heard, one side gets opportunity to prepare as much as they want, and the other side doesn't, that's not really fair, and that's kind of how it's worked out, um, as we're going through some of our contested conditional use permit hearings. And then the, um, third thing, and I think the commission will have to make a decision on this eventually, because, um, the Planning Commission, at our meeting last Thursday, there were eight of us there, and we were evenly divided on, on this issue, so I'm thinking there won't be a recommendation that'll come forward, but it's something that we need to consider, is whether or not conditional use permit should be transferable. And in some counties, they are not. Um, what that means is, if you give somebody a conditional use permit to do a particular occupation on, on a piece of property, and then they sell it down the road, does that ha, come back in front of the Board of Adjustments again? So the Board of Adjustments has an opportunity, look at whether there are any issues, or, once you have a conditional use permit, do you just have it forever? Uh, that, that's a policy decision that's going to have to be made. The, the citizens that- That, that's a policy decision that's going to have to be made, the, the citizens, that there was, the public input that came forward, they were asking for that not to automatically be transferred, but the board was split evenly on that, and, and we didn't take an official vote, we were just doing consensus, but it's something we're going to need to discuss more of. So, those are the things that's going on with planning and zoning, and that would be my report.
Mr. Bartley.
All righty. On that conditional use, uh, just to go back to that for just a second there, uh, when we used to do conditional uses on the city side, we could specifically, this conditional use is for this particular property owner does not continue, uh, as part of the conditions, so maybe that's an easy out.
I, I, I do, I thought about that myself this morning, when I was thinking about my report, and I thought, maybe that should be part of what we put in there, this one will be transferable, this one will not be, and people can come back, and if everything's working good and there are no problems, it can be re-permitted, but...
You could, you could put conditions in conditional uses, uh, anyway, all right. Uh, my report, uh, innovation reception on June eighth out at the campus, uh, well-attended, uh, and some new food I'd never had before from a food truck, it was pretty interesting, and does it with the people. Uh, budget hearings on the thirteenth and fourteenth, uh, very enlightening for my first year for the county budget, very intense, very, uh, complete, and, uh, it's, it's like this thick, if anybody hasn't seen it, to look at the budget, uh, and it takes a while to go through it, but the staff did a wonderful job of presenting the budget and explaining things to, to all of us, and in particular to me, who had questions. On, uh, yesterday, Monday, I attended the Mental Health Task Force meeting at noon, we had Judge, uh, Chief Justice Gilbertson present to us, uh, his house bill to put together a, uh, easiest way to explain it, it was, it involved criminal justice and the systems and the court systems and the jail systems, and there's too much for me to report, but he gave a good report, and it was a good discussion about things as it related not only to criminal justice, but some other mental health issues that the task force would be looking at. Uh, this is the, the city's, uh, task force that, where we have one representative, myself on that particular board. Uh, then, last evening, I had the board meeting with the Essential Behavioral Health, I attended that, and I guess I came here this morning, so that concludes my report, unless you have questions.
Commissioner Miller. Ryan, do you have any report? Forgot you were there.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good, thanks.
All right.
Okay, June sixth, um, I met with Steve Meyer at the utilities, and he did a little quick explanation of how that all worked, and thank you for suggesting that we do that, because that was very, very informative. Commissioner Jensen and I went together, and it was, it was very good. On June seventh, uh, we had the eight-county meeting, and I think the biggest thing that happened there was that we had election of officers, and I am no longer chair, thank heaven, however, I did get put on the executive board, so, walk on. Um, June thirteen and fourteen, we did budget hearings, uh, June nineteenth, we did a conference call with BKV regarding our next, next steps for the jail expansion, and I met with Tom Richter concerning achievement days, he called and wanted to meet, and, uh, his proposal was that, due to the fact that the Alan Jackson concert is the day after achievement days, he, they wanted to not house any livestock in the main arena, they would put the show rink in there, um, but didn't want to house in there, and I expressed that hogs could not be in the holding barn on the dirt, and he said he understood that, and they would be willing to give us, we could use the blue rink and the holding barn to house, and put, you know, and, and then when I followed up by talking to Sonia, um, who would have been here today to talk about this, but she's in the middle of the four-H horse show, uh, we decided that it would be easier to probably put the arena in either the blue rink or the holding barn, because then it would be closer to where the livestock is housed, and, so, we're still trying to work out some issues, but she suggested that Mr. Richter go in front of the Leaders Association, so that meeting is July tenth, I believe it is, at five-thirty, and he has agreed to come, she didn't want to make that decision on her own, so he has agreed to come to that meeting, and, um...
Is that Swiftell?
Talk to the leaders, yeah. I think it's July tenth, I have it written down at home, I didn't put it on my calendar, because I'm going to go to that, but, um, so, you know, we just kind of continue to have some issues, and, yeah, he's, you know, he's apologetic, but they don't, they didn't want the flies, and they didn't want the smell, but yet, well, you, you can, you can do your achievement days in perpetuity, so, I don't, you know, I guess we'll just try to work it out the best that we can, and see what happens. That's all I have.
When you say the blue rink, that's, that's the rink that's open to the public for open skating, is that what, we're, we're talking about the blue rink?
Yeah, it's the ice arena right next to the...
Right, so, because they have two, they have...
Yeah, the red rink, they don't let animals in.
Okay, but they would put goddess on the floor in there then, is that what they're...
Or dirt if necessary, but I think it, I think, it depends on what we house in there, but yeah.
Uh-huh. And there would be enough seating for the public, would there not?
In there, there would be, yes, if they decide to put the arena in there, they're going to come up with the, they're going to do a plan to see what would work best, where the arena would work best, and, you know, Sonia and I talked about several different scenarios for housing, and, um, so he said they'll do up a plan, and one thing, one good thing was, would be that we would not have to pay the thirty-five hundred dollars for the dirt, because...
That were inconvenience.
Yeah, yeah, so, but...
That might be a nice compromise, if, the, the blue rink is a nice area.
It is a nice area, uh, we had the miniature horse show there, and it, it worked very, very well.
The static exhibits would still be allowed in?
The static would still, and the barbecue would still be in the main, main, in, in our C and D rooms at Swiftell.
I just, from the outdoor area to the blue rink, is that an issue getting back and forth with people or livestock or whatever, I'm, I'm, I guess I haven't ever gone that route, the holding barn, yeah, so it's fine. Good job.
You know, it, it was also brought up to, to leave the show rink in the Swiftell while moving sheep and hogs back and forth across that asphalt hill, they just...
They would have, they would have done an alley for us, but I don't know, if you've ever herded a hog, it is not an easy task, and I have, it's not easy to do, I'm sure, I'm sure Commissioner Jensen can attest to that.
Right, and I believe there might be an event at the achievement days that you'll have an opportunity to show an animal, so...
Oh, boy, if the commissioners have to show, that'll be interesting, but...
Get your show, show stick ready, so...
So, um, and, and the same with the sheep, you know, even though they can put halters on them, they don't leave real well.
That's not just one trip across, you got numerous events you're showing and stuff, so...
You know, and they, they thought it through, because there are, there are gates on each end of that, between the building and the holding barn, and they, he said, we would make sure those were closed, so if an animal got loose, you know, we'd have, but, um, and he was apologetic, but, you know, it, it just goes on and on, it seems, but, we're going to try to, well, I don't know what the, well, I do kind of know what the leaders are going to say, I think, I, I told him, there's going to be opposition, but I've seen him deal with the city council, so he can handle it.
And, and as the liaison to the Swiftell board, I mean, that was the only, we had a choice between that date and not having Alan Jackson, that was the choice.
And he explained all of that, um, so, that's, that's the end of my report.
Yeah, on, uh, the sixth, I also went, the utilities, uh, visit with Steve Meyer, it was very interesting how, how developments are done and the processes, and, uh, can open our eyes to that. On the seventh, went to eight-county meeting and congratulate Stephanie on being elected to the executive board, uh, it, uh, she'll have some extra duties at the convention and stuff, uh, but, uh, it's great to see somebody from Brookings on the executive board, so. On the thirteenth, did budgets, uh, and the fourteenth, uh, like to thank the department heads, uh, for, uh, working with us and, uh, putting up with us through the process, uh, it was, we finally got through it all, so. And also, on the nineteenth, yesterday, had a conference call with, uh, our architects on the jail expansion, um, you know, I looked through some notes, uh, dating back to two thousand when they kind of talked about this, um, two thousand fourteen, we started setting aside some money, there was fifteen pages of notes, uh, including numerous agreements, resolutions, uh, and discussion, huh? Like to thank everybody that's worked on this, I mean, from jail staff to everybody, uh, thanks for working on it, and we'll continue to move forward, and hopefully, we can get something done here in the near future, but, uh, I guess that's all I have, and, um, moving into executive session, and in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two, redundancy four, contract negotiations.
Some more?
Second. Motion is second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.